Meeting to order on November ninth, twenty twenty one. First, we will adopt the agenda. Can I get a motion that the agenda for the November ninth, two thousand twenty one committee, the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Shannard makes that motion. Questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carried. Now we will adopt the previous minutes. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty one committee of the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Moore makes that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carried. We don't have any delegations tonight, so we'll move on to reports from staff. From infrastructure and planning, we've got a municipal energy manager program year one progress update. And it looks like Brendan Riome, our municipal energy coordinator, will be leading the way. Go ahead, Brendan.
Thank you, everyone. Hello, counsel, Mr. Mayor, colleagues. I'll just share my screen with you and we'll get started here. So, hello, everyone. My name is Brendan Riome, I'm the municipal energy coordinator with the town of Edson. Tonight, I'm going to be discussing the municipal energy manager program in the town of Edson, so give an introduction of the program to those who haven't had the introduction before and give an update on the progress that we've had in the program so far in the first year that we've been participating. So, like, yeah, like I said, we'll be going over the program, the progress we've made to date, and the next steps and the potential work plan going forward. So, going into the municipal energy manager program, this program is administered by the Municipal Climate Change Action Center with technical assistance provided from ClearResult Consulting. So, this program is designed to provide support for municipalities to build their internal capacity for energy management, sustainability, and climate resiliency. And that's done through technical support from ClearResult, so they are able to help us work in programs and instigate projects in the municipality, as well as the Municipal Climate Change Action Center will provide funding for up to eighty percent of an energy manager salary for up to two years. So, since we've been in this program for a year right now, the funding for this program will expire at the end of September, twenty twenty two. So, within the program, we've set some goals out in the first year. We set out to incorporate energy management and sustainability into town operations. We wanted to develop a made-for-the-town-of-Edson energy management policy and achieve a three point six percent greenhouse gas emissions reduction in twenty twenty one. Now, to give some context to where that greenhouse gas emissions goal came from, we focused on seven buildings in the town of Edson portfolio in twenty nine. And twenty nineteen was used as our baseline for emissions, because that was the most recent typical year prior to COVID happening and all the changes that we've seen since then. So, from the seven buildings that were focused on, so Repsol Place, Public Works, Civic Center, Galway Station Museum, Edson Fire Hall, the Public Library, and Griffiths Park Center, our emissions totaled to two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine tons of greenhouse gases in twenty nineteen. So, a three point six percent reduction equated to about seventy-nine tons. So, since Repsol Place made up about two-thirds of our portfolio, it was initially a focus for emissions reduction. However, since there's a very short remaining lifespan left in it before the new multiplex is opened, we were very limited in what we could do in terms of operational and capital changes in the building. But we'll cover a lot more of what we did to achieve our goals as we go into progress date. So, the goals that we'd set out had some very significant results. So, in creating an energy management policy for the town, we've created a draft policy that will be brought forward to council in the coming months for feedback and collaboration and their approval to see if we can push it forward. Now, we weren't able to bring it forward during the previous council, just due to time constraints with the election and everything, but it will be coming to work forward to council in the next couple of months. And in building a culture of energy efficiency with town operations, that was achieved through we started with employee engagement, so we hosted four luncheon learns on energy management sustainability topics under the umbrella of what I call the Edson Sustainability Series. Previous presentations were all recorded, they're available on the town's YouTube page for those who are interested. And on a wider scale, on October nineteenth, I partnered with Community Futures West Yellowhead to do a presentation on energy-saving opportunities for local businesses, and this is part of Community Futures West Yellowhead's push for sustainable economic growth and diversification in the county. So, there was some very good turnout on that and some really good engagement, so it was really good to see. But the biggest piece was in projects, emissions, and all the reductions surrounding that. And another big piece that we looked at was grant funding. So, we had pursued several avenues for grant funding. Twenty-one thousand dollars has already been secured for grant funding. So, that's sixteen thousand dollars from the Municipal Climate Change Action Center for a lighting upgrade in Griffiths Park. And just as of a week and a half ago, we received a five thousand dollar grant from Fortis Alberta for some energy management projects. Fifty-seven thousand dollars is currently under review by the Municipal Climate Change Action Center for an HVAC upgrade in Griffiths Park Center. And as Counselor Moore brought up last week in the council meeting, fourteen thousand dollars is in the very early stages of application for a lighting retrofit fit in the museum. So, we're still working on that one and should be moving forward. And it should be noted that the funding that we've looked into for Griffiths Park Center, so for the lighting and the HVAC upgrade, was not a sole task by myself. This was a collaborative effort between myself and community services, specifically Tanya Byers, Guy La Tour, and Mike Tebow. And I've had excellent support from them in moving forward on this, so it wasn't a sole effort. The biggest piece that we were working towards was emissions reduction. So, as I mentioned, we'd set our emissions reduction target for a three point six percent, or seventy-nine tons, below twenty nineteen levels in twenty twenty one. We did this through completing energy audits of six buildings to identify energy conservation measures, which are operational, behavioral, maintenance, and equipment changes that can be instigated and implemented to reduce energy consumption. So, we identified a hundred and forty-five energy conservation measures, and as of November fifth, we have completed forty of them and achieved a projected annual emissions reduction of eighty-eight tons. So, instead of three point six percent, we achieved a four percent reduction, so we exceeded our goal for the year. The majority of these energy conservation measures were operational or behavioral changes, and those we found were able to get us a lot of the way to where we needed to on our targets. And nine of those measures were funded from the Energy Reserve for twenty thousand dollars. So, there were some low-cost projects that went into place to achieve these goals. And with these low-cost projects, one thing I'm very happy about in how we implemented these is we used all a hundred percent local suppliers and contractors for the projects where we needed them. So, not only were we improving our own environmental performance, we're keeping the money in our community, and we're supporting local businesses, and I'm very excited about that. So, in achieving that eighty-eight tons emissions reduction, this will realize a annual utility savings of around ten thousand two hundred dollars. I'll give a few examples of some other results that we've seen from these projects so far. So, one was implementing HVAC scheduling in the public library. So, we had set a schedule for heating in January of twenty twenty one. So, this kept the building at twenty-one degrees Celsius during occupied hours, and it set back the temperature to seventeen during unoccupied hours. So, as part of my work, I've created energy models for the buildings that we have in focus. So, these models are quite complex, as they take into account occupancy schedules, weather patterns, historical energy consumption, and changes in operations. So, they take into a lot of changes from COVID and a lot of the difference in operation there, so they are accounted for in these models. There's a lot of rigor that goes into them, and a lot of rigors required to have a statistically valid model. I've recently taken training, and I'm certified in the use of this software to do this type of modeling, so I'm very confident in the accuracy of them. So, in the graphic here, the blue line on the graph shows our predicted consumption for natural gas in the library. The green is our actual consumption. So, in January of twenty twenty one, around where the line showing ECM forty-nine is, which was implementing scheduling for the HVAC, we saw the actual energy consumption decrease and was consistently below predicted for the remainder of the year as of September twenty twenty one, which is the latest data that we have. So, this was a no-cost change that has seen the avoidance of about three and a half tons of carbon, as well as about three hundred and fifty dollars in operation savings, just from changing a few settings in a building. There was no difference in occupancy comfort, and it was just a really good change on top of that. Another one was some HVAC servicing that was done in Galway Station Museum, and this was part of annual maintenance for the furnaces and heat recovery ventilators. I can't take full credit for this one. Actually, I can't take any credit for this one, because this was headed up by Sherry McDowell, the museum manager, and she's been very good at being proactive on this, and she runs a very tight ship over there. So, what was done is there was the annual servicing done on the furnaces and heat recovery ventilators, with one heat recovery ventilator being rebuilt and having some work done to it. And this was done in May twenty twenty one. So, when what we saw in that was immediately a thirty-three percent drop in electricity consumption from June until September, which is the most recent data that we have. This avoided about eight point four tons of GHD emissions and avoided about eight hundred and seventy-five dollars in utility costs, just from that annual servicing. And this happened over the summer, where we had the heat dome events, where we had the massive amounts of heat waves there, but we were still able to save energy and operate the building efficiently and effectively. So, Sherry McDowell deserves some congratulations on that one for getting this work done. Some additional projects that we've completed is some domestic hot water pipe installation in Public Works and the Fire Hall. We've done some building envelope improvements in the public library to address not only some energy concerns, but some occupancy comfort issues in terms of drafting and cold spots. So, that should improve the space and the occupancy comfort within it. We have also included some installations for some programmable thermostats in Public Workshop, as well as Fire Hall. We've only had those in place for a couple of months right now, so we're still waiting on preliminary data. But as of September twenty twenty one, we've seen about a fifty-five percent reduction in natural gas consumption in the Fire Hall. That's only one point of data, so it's not indicative of trend, but it is a positive thing to see. When more data comes out, we'll have more information on how it's performing, and we'll and we'll be able to report on that later. So, the work plan going forward for the coming year for this program is similar to the first year, but there's a few other big pieces. So, some very high-level goals is we want to establish in collaboration with council an emissions reduction target for twenty twenty two. So, this would be setting the target with council and their approval, and moving forward with that with additional projects and additional energy conservation measures being implemented. The Municipal Climate Change Action Center recommends a five percent emissions reduction for each year of the program, but that is variable, and it can be based on the resources available for the municipalities or any other goals that need to be set or want to be set. I want to finalize the approval of the energy management policy with the collaboration and assistance of council and senior management. And I'm looking to complete three capital projects in two town-owned facilities. Those three capital projects are a lighting retrofit in the Civic Center, a boiler and controls upgrade in the Civic Center, and a lighting retrofit in Public Works. These three projects together will have a combined emissions reduction of about forty-one tons and see a estimated utility savings per year of about seventy-eight hundred dollars. In addition to these things, three more facilities will be assessed for energy conservation measures. So, we'll be looking at the wastewater treatment plant, the airport, as well as the landfill, to identify some more energy conservation measures and some more emissions reductions that we can achieve. It should be noted with the additional ECMs, sixty-six ECMs remain to be completed. There are capital projects that were discovered that can be applicable to Repsol Place, but those aren't included in this total, since they won't pay out in terms of energy and emission savings, as well as economic savings. So, we have not included those in this count. But with the three additional buildings that I'm including in my focus, more ECMs will be identified from this. So, we'll have more and more opportunity and energy conservation measures to implement. And because this is only ten facilities we'll be looking at in these two years, they're only a small section of what the town actually has in its portfolio. There are fifty-eight properties owned by the town that are serviced by electricity and natural gas. So, we're only looking at one-sixth of our total portfolio here. So, significant opportunities exist for energy conservation throughout the town. So, there's much more work to be done outside the scope of what I'm doing. And all of these things matter is in maintaining and protecting our utility costs and mitigating some risks. As was brought up in SBS this year, for those who are there, and for the new, those who haven't seen this information, I'll just, to bring you up to speed, is that utility costs are projected to rise year over year from now until twenty thirty, at an average of about two point five percent per year. A large part of this increase is due to the yearly increase in carbon tax. So, we're currently at forty dollars per ton, and we'll be increasing to fifty dollars per ton next year, and up to about a hundred and seventy dollars per ton by twenty thirty. And another piece that's driving this increase is fluctuating and rising electricity costs. As council probably is aware of, that our electricity rates will be increasing for twenty twenty-two onwards, just based on fluctuations in the market. And that's going to be the norm going forward. So, this graphic was provided by NMAX when we were looking into renewing our electricity contract. It shows the volatility in the market. Prices increases in volatility is the norm in the electrical sector. When we signed our last contract with NMAX, that was in twenty seventeen, and that was in a period of relative calm for electricity prices. The norm is volatility, and we're going back into that area. So, this becomes a significant risk that we have the ability to mitigate through effective energy management. At minimum, we require a two point five percent reduction in costs and emissions per year to maintain to maintain a level utility cost. And that can be achieved through this energy management work that I'm doing, and we have seen a very significant result. And I'm very happy with the progress that we've had so far. And I'm very thankful for all the assistance that I've gotten from everyone, not only in infrastructure and planning, but every other department that I've collaborated with. So, I know that was a lot of information, but thank you, council. I appreciate your appreciate your interest and your attention. So, we'll open the floor up to questions.
Thanks, Brendan, for that presentation. It's appreciated as always. First question, I have some more.
To the chair, through to Brendan. Galway Station Museum, was Chamber Office included in that study?
Through the chair, Counselor Moore. No, the Chamber of Commerce was not included in that study, as it was considered a very small energy user relative to the larger museum itself.
Counselor Shannard?
Through the chair, Brendan. Brendan, are we looking at any solar panels? And one I refer to as fairly, is the water treatment plant, I understand, runs by all electricity due to fire hazards. So, it's got to be a huge power thing. Would there be a possibility of looking at the building with solar panels on the roof? And the other question I had, the three retrofits that were saving seventy-eight hundred dollars per year, what is our cost to redo the monitors and stuff? Do you have that figure in front of you again?
Through the chair to Counselor Shannard. For the wastewater treatment plant, we hadn't considered solar for that facility. In the meantime, we're more focused on operational changes and reducing our energy consumption prior to looking at any alternative sources of energy for us. We determined that's the most cost-effective way that we can lower our costs for that facility. And for the the three major projects that I put forward there, I unfortunately don't have the numbers in front of me right now. I believe it would be a, I see Christine just put her camera on there.
So, we're in the process, we've actually hired a consultant through the chair to Counselor Shannard, sorry, to give us some better cost estimates on those three projects. Tentatively, they're in the capital plan right now, being funded from our energy reserve. The one, I believe, is eighty-five thousand dollars. The other one, I believe, is sixty-five thousand dollars, and then the other one is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the biggest one being the boiler project. I think we may have lumped them into both of those projects into one project on the capital plan, now that I'm thinking about it. The boiler project is kind of, we're getting to the end of the life of the existing boiler in the Civic Center. So, I think it's an opportunity to look at replacing it and capturing this as an energy savings, rather than looking at it as just a way of saving money, if that makes sense.
Makes sense, thanks.
Counselor Taylor?
First of all, thank you for your presentation through the chair. Thank you for your presentation and your work on this. I see great value in this work, and I'm glad we're moving forward on this. I also like the grants work that you've done in terms of paying for this. I think it's fantastic. So, the first question I have is you had some luncheon learns with local businesses, and you said it was very successful. How many businesses were in attendance, if we can get more businesses on board with this? Were they big businesses, small businesses? Yeah, just wondering if you can question on that.
Definitely. Through the chair to Counselor Taylor. So, the four luncheon learns I did through the Edson Sustainability Series were in internal luncheon learns. So, they were for town staff and everyone employed with the town of Edson. The one presentation I did with Community Futures West Yellowhead, that was the only public one with local county businesses. I unfortunately don't have a lot of information on what sectors were represented and what businesses were involved. But it was geared mostly towards small businesses located in Yellowhead County. So, these would be these would be very, very small businesses. There was no warehouse or involved.
Anybody else? Counselor Taylor?
Through the chair again to Mr. Real. I assume when we set, and I guess through council as well, when we set our emissions reduction goal for this coming year, is that a strategic planning initiative that we do, or is that, where is that happening?
Through the chair, Counselor Taylor, we will have in that discussion either a strategic planning, or we will be discussing it in a committee that will be. So, it will be coming.
And then, sorry, through that, to the chair, to Mr. Real. Based on what you've seen, and you're out in the field more than we are, what should, what do you think our goal should be?
Through the chair to Counselor Taylor. There's two options that I'm leaning towards on the goal, is that the first option is that the Municipal Climate Change Action Center recommends five percent emissions reduction. And I believe that is a very achievable goal with the resources that we have and the availability of low-cost and no-cost energy conservation measures. And the second option there is that we can work with what we find after the energy audits of the three additional buildings that we're adding to the portfolio. So, the wastewater treatment plant, the airport, and the landfill. So, once we have those buildings audited and we know what is possible in terms of energy conservation and emissions reduction, then we can use that information to make a very informed decision from there.
Thank you.
Haven't had a chance to speak yet, Mr. Real. For the proposed renovations or upgrades to the airport building, they're proposed right now in our capital plan. Have you done an energy retrofit on it prior to the proposed renovation? So, we'll be able to see what changes are able to be made. Go ahead, Matt.
Sorry, I'm gonna take that one. So, Brendan through the, or to the chair, to Brendan is currently in the process of starting our energy audits on the airport. So, he's been out there and done a field visit already. He's going through the utilities data to try and build that model. The capital plan, hopefully, he's got all the information he needs to set the baseline at this point. The stuff in the capital plan would be sort of, some of it might affect our energy use. For example, there's some repairs required in the basement and on some of the windows that are included in that. But the intent of what was put in the capital plan for the airport wasn't specifically for energy projects. But as we find them, if we can incorporate them and find funding streams for them, we'll definitely be being aggressive at trying to capture some of that. And I think there's some really cool funding streams available, because it is a publicly accessible building.
Thanks. One more question to maybe Mr. Fisher or Mr. Real. Have you been noticing a lot of available grants through the energy upgrade projects compared to other regular town projects?
Yes, to the chair. The mainstream of funding that's come out right now is for community-focused buildings. So, there is several major grant funds available. So, the Green and Inclusive Buildings Fund from the Government of Canada. So, the library is pursuing this funding stream right now for their expansion. Another funding stream available is the Community Revitalization Fund from Western Economic Diversification, which is currently being in the beginning stages of being pursued for the lighting upgrade in the museum that I discussed. And there is some potential suitability for those funding avenues for other buildings in our portfolio. We will be pursuing the opportunity to see if those fit with some projects that we have lined up and some projects that might become available through these energy audits.
If possible, I would like to add a couple of comments on to that. So, with regards to Counselor Shannard's question about solar panels, there is some grant funding available currently for implementing some of those solar panel projects. So, Mr. Realman and I are very interested in looking at the feasibility of that. We didn't actually consider the wastewater treatment plant as a space when we were looking at it initially, but I think it's a great idea. And we'll definitely be looking into that one as well. Going forward for the town, a lot of the grants that are available to us actually do require some level of assessment in terms of climate resiliency or greenhouse gas mitigation. Even the multiplex funding stream, there's actually a requirement that before we ever put a shovel in the ground for construction, we have to give them an assessment of what our greenhouse gas emissions will be and give them concrete measures of how we're going to beat what's considered standard for a building. So, going forward, this is a cost of business, a requirement of business, if we're finding and trying to find grants. So, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Bevan?
Through the chair, down at Griffiths Park there, is the outdoor rink and air lights considered into this report too? Because once they come on nighttime later on, all night, like five o'clock in the afternoon or whatever, is that considered in this too?
Through the chair to Counselor Bevan, yes, they are considered in this in this portfolio that I'm working at. And fortunately, those lights that are on at Griffiths Park Center, facilities maintenance has been proactive on that, and they've already been converted to LEDs. So, they're very efficient already, and it's been a very good change that facilities maintenance has put in.
Through the chair, also our doctor's office over there. Are we looking at that too?
Yes, through the chair to Counselor Bevan. It's currently not included in this scope for this upcoming year. However, it most definitely should be included going forward in future years, as that is a very significant energy user in the town. And I would expect there would be some very good opportunities for optimization and performance improvement there.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Real. Do you have everything that you require from us regarding your presentation?
Yes, I do. Thank you guys for your attention. Yes, I, I do. Thank you guys for your attention and your interest. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. So we will move on to community and protective services, the Out of Cold Initiative. Looks like Ms. Byers is, that's not our community development manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And thank you, you've already introduced me as a community development coordinator or manager, sorry, with the town. And I trust that you've all had the opportunity to read the staff report that we've provided. And what we just wanted to do was outline some of the history of previous councils' direction. And also administration's engagement in the homelessness efforts in our community. I, I'm going to briefly go through the report highlighting some of the key points and then follow up with a question and answer period. And really just open the floor for discussion with council. So back in August of two thousand nineteen, staff from the Edson Friendship Centers Housing Plus Program. Provided council with a presentation. And it was regarding homelessness in our community and requested financial support. To increase their staffing model to support individuals who are accessing their housing plus program. At that time, the motion was defeated by council. Later that winter, the need to provide our homeless population with a place to escape the elements during extreme weather. Became a really immediate concern. And as per direction from council, administration opened the out of the cold facility. And that was placed at the airport location in January twenty twenty. And we also had created the out of the cold protocol and that guided the project. And so, yeah, that was done with, you know, a lot of help, I guess, from the entire community services group. With protective services and parks and protective services and also with our team as well. So we, we had to initiate fairly quickly and, and got it hooked up and functioning. Unfortunately, that winter, we didn't find that that facility was used very often. We actually only saw, I think on one occasion that we could actually tell that someone had utilized the, the. The facility. So, you know, in speaking with the housing plus individuals who actually have a lot more contact with the homeless group. I, you know, there, there's some speculation that maybe it was a location. Also maybe the fact that it was only open during, you know, the extreme weather conditions of minus thirty. And even just communicating that to let them know when it was and wasn't open. It was a bit of a challenge for them to get there in those extreme circumstances, not knowing maybe if it was open or not. The other, I guess, concern with it was safety. Because we couldn't have a lock on it. Otherwise, you know, you might have one individual go in, lock the doors and nobody else would have access. So being that there's no lock, that also means. You know, it doesn't feel like the safest place to lay your head down and have a sleep when the building is fully accessible to others. So those were some of the potential concerns, I guess, with the facility, the way that it was being run. And of course, it wasn't being manned. It was just simply open for the evening and come and go. So. So yes, that was only open when it was minus thirty with the wind chill and it was found, the facility wasn't used very much. In November of twenty twenty, the Shelter Pod Committee, which was comprised of a group of engaged community representatives. From the Edson District Recycling Society, Edson Friendship Center Housing Plus Program, Alberta Health Services and RCMP. They came to council and presented the Shelter Pod Project. And at that time, the town of Edson, Mayor and Council, they made the decision to contribute sixty four thousand dollars. Towards the project. And that allowed the Shelter Pod Group to immediately get started on, you know, final plans and start implementing their project. And, and start building. So they did begin operating that facility in twenty twenty one. And, but also during construction, the town of Edson did bring that out of the cold facility back out to Edson. It was just a rented trailer of sorts. It was placed at the recycle depot this time because we felt that it was more accessible. To the individuals and they did find that it was actually quite heavily used. So I think the move is probably good. You know, at this time, I really just want to commend the Shelter Pod Committee. Their ingenuity and their passion to create that pilot project. And, you know, just with the ultimate goal of providing sustainable, long-term, safe, accessible, low-cost emergencies. Sorry, emergency shelters for individuals in our community experiencing homelessness. They did really an amazing job and I'm sure that many of you have seen. You know, Mayor Zahara has, has spoken about it on the news and it's been all over social media. And gotten attention from ministers who have come out to visit and take a tour. So it, you know, it really is. An impressive project that was. You know, is just looking to be a really good rural option to support the homeless community. So. One other thing, the town of Edson administration, we are a member of the homelessness task force. And although it didn't meet throughout the pandemic, there were just so many individuals that were redeployed and, you know, dealing with the emergent crises. So we, we didn't get a chance to meet, so we lost a bit of steam there. But we did reconvene last month. And I guess during that meeting, you know, many community agencies came forward. And, you know, they've just noted that there is going to be a major need for an overflow. Situation for homeless individuals. So the five shelter pods that we do have that are being run by the committee, they're filling up within five minutes every night is what they've reported. And, you know, whether it be the RCMP or AHS, you know, everyone's just reporting that the need seems to be greater. This year than we've seen before. And. You know, really, I, I guess that, that concludes my presentation and. I'm gonna, I'll do my best to answer any questions, but I, I'm really just wanting to open it up to discussion and see how. You know, council is feeling about the, the current situation and, you know, what the desire is moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Byers, on the Out of Cold Initiative update. Questions, Counselor Moore?
To the chair, through to Tanya. The city of Medicine Hat apparently has eradicated homelessness in their environments. I wondered if administration had, had checked into that to see what they have done. I know it's a larger center and all this, but I was just curious to see if anybody had checked that.
Through the chair to Counselor Moore, I, I have watched some videos and, and, you know, read some of the articles about what Medicine Hat had done. And I guess from, from what I'm understanding, it's, and same with Drayton Valley, it seems that any. Homeless initiative that is really being somewhat successful is you have. Multiple groups that are coming together to solve it. It, it's not an easy solution. It's a very large, difficult problem to approach. And, you know, what I'm noticing in those communities is that they have a mix of, you know. Individuals, churches, agencies, funding, maybe from provincial government, federal government. Business owners. You know, it, it's just a really multi-dimensional response with. You know, just a lot of passionate individuals saying, you know, we need, we need to make a change here. And it's coordinated. And I think that's where the success is coming from, is that wraparound, you know, service. And making sure that they get what they need.
Thank you, Counselor Shannard.
Through the chair, thanks for your report. As you mentioned, the five pods are being used like when they turn them on at eight o'clock. Do they have any idea how many people are being turned away? Because if there's five being used, that means five people, just a rough number to give us a gauge on how many homeless people are in need in our community.
Ms. Byers?
Through the chair to Counselor Shannard. From what I understand, and I don't want to speak out of turn and I think it's somewhat anecdotal, but. In hearing from Anne at the recycle depot, she's indicating that there's probably about ten individuals that, that. Are seeking, and, and she wasn't saying every night because she's not, you know, on the phone every night. But they're just noticing a lot more homeless activity and individuals that aren't in the pods at night. Because they do have video there that is seeing that interaction.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bevan?
Through the chair to Tanya. So if the pods are being used that much in that and they want to build more. Did the groups have any idea where they want to put them at all? Is there anything available?
Ms. Byers?
Through the chair to Counselor Bevan. At, at this point, you know, I, I know that they've indicated, sure, they could use more. But with that, of course, you need more resources. It takes a lot more to man, more facilities, clean them. And, you know, until the Shelter Pod Group comes forward saying, we do want to make this happen. I guess we haven't really looked or identified another spot. But I also, you know, don't want to speak on their behalf because I, I'm not an actual part of that committee. So, you know, I, I can look into that and get back to you.
Thank you for the presentation, Tanya. Unfortunately, we had orientation during the last task force meeting, but I know members of council will be at the, the next one. This has turned into a major challenge in our community. It has been an issue for quite some time, I think. What we're looking for today is whether or not we want to do the Out of the Cold Initiative again this winter, if I'm not mistaken, the spires. In terms of having that rented trailer available. When we started the Shelter Pro- Project, we felt that five would be acceptable number of pods. Based on what we were seeing before, we've seen a need of an increase in need. Largely due to shortage of housing in the community and some other challenges that we have. But there's, with, with the Shelter Pods, you know, it's not. It's not an easy thing to operate. I know the volunteers have been maxed out and taxed out. Dealing with it and, you know, it has created some other. Unexpected consequences and issues in that general area. So I think you're just looking for council's general direction. If this is the direction we want to go down to, we kept bringing that trailer in again so you can budget for it next year. Or if council that you wants not to go in that direction, is that, is that my understanding, Tanya?
Through the chair to Mayor Zahara. I, yes, I'm definitely looking for a direction on, you know, is this council looking to. You know, put resources towards the problem, I guess, and what that might look like. Certainly, after we made the sixty four thousand dollar commitment last year. It was felt that we no longer had to put this in our budget for that annual trailer. And so, you know, just to note that this year it doesn't exist in our budget. So, yeah, I guess that's a question for twenty one on an emergency basis. Is that something that we're looking at doing? But at this point, it hasn't been requested of us, you know, officially. But at the same time, you know, I'm just wondering. Council's appetite, I guess, to be part of this solution and, and get ahead of it because, you know, temperatures are dipping.
Counselor Positiony?
Through the chair to Inspires. I have a couple of questions on it. We seems like over the years, our homelessness has exploded in our community to the point where it's visible in our streets. We're, we're trying to address the, the end result. I guess I have a couple of questions is. We analyze how. How this is, how their, how it's growing? And then are there neighbors in the same communities of similar size having the same number of people they're seeing as homelessness? So is White Court and Hinton and communities like that, are they having the same kind of numbers that we're having or are we just in it all?
Ms. Byers?
Through the chair to Counselor Positiony. I, with the research that I have done in Drayton Valley, it, it does seem to be fairly similar with like twenty to thirty individuals that have been utilizing the MAT program. And, you know, again, in Drayton, that, that's been a coalition of sorts that, that has been created to. But they do have a staff position that's coordinating the MAT program and then they also have volunteers that are, that are helping with that. What I do, you know, anecdotally, what I'm hearing is. You know, people think that it's growing, that people are coming from other places and, you know. From what I'm understanding is that the homeless individuals are, they are residents. They are Edson residents. Same at Drayton Valley, you know, people said the same there, saying like, where are all these homeless coming from? And, you know, the truth is, they, they are from that community. And, you know, they, they seem to be more visible right now. From what I understand from the task force meeting, the. There have been a couple households that several of these individuals were staying in or couch surfing, if you will. And these facilities have been closed down or households, which is why we're probably seeing more visibility of that right now. And Anne Oriet had also expressed that the provincial building is noticing an increase. Of individuals around their building and trying to get in and, you know, also around the recycle depot.
I've got a question, Ms. Byers. So years ago, when I was taking my recycling to the recycle depot, you know, in the early mornings or late evenings, I would often see an individual or two. At those times and it certainly wasn't a concern or a bother to me. I have noticed even during the day that that has happened. Whereas before in daylight hours, I maybe wouldn't see people lingering there, kind of rummaging through. If we were to add another trailer to, as we had before. To enhance the Out of Cold Initiative, would we put it back at the recycling depot? Or is there another location that administration would recommend?
Through the chair to Counselor Byer or to the chair, I guess. I, I know that there, there has been some concern, I guess, more so with managing and safety of the facility. When, again, it's not manned by night and I know they did have some safety concerns happening there. They, you know, also the Shelter Pod community is just expressing that, that it is, you know, a, a really large undertaking. Again, making sure that that place is being taken care of. You know, one, one of the reasons that it was actually placed at the airport to begin with. Was because we were able to do the hookups and whatnot because you need a certain amp and whatnot to hook these trailers up to. So that investment has been made. But putting it back in a place that it really wasn't very well utilized, I don't know that that's a good idea. But other than that, you know, I, I've spoken with Mr. Schramm. And, you know, we, we just don't really know of another good place to put it.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Taylor and then Mayor Zahara?
So through the chair to council administration. I think this is initiative that we have to sort of take part in. This is our community, as I said before, these are our residents. And so this is, this is our concern, this is our issue. So we need to look at this issue in sort of two ways. One, how to prevent it and two, how to manage the current situation. The preventative stuff is more of a strategic planning initiative, what to deal with the homelessness, mental health addictions task force. And I'm looking forward to working with Mayor Zahara, Counselor Byer and the organization to sort of look at preventative measures. And then we got to look at what we're doing now to manage and mitigate this situation. I read this report that administration's buyers have presented and it is an immediate concern. That we have an overflow of, of, of individuals from the shelter pod. And certainly we cannot leave them, leave them out when the temperatures dip down as cold as minus thirty. So action has to be taken and that's a way to at least manage the situation for now. Because the preventative stuff will take time, will take years. In order to change the homelessness issue in our community. For right now, we have to manage the situation. So I would obviously want to hear from council. I'd be in favor of, of looking. At that initiative again, the Shelter Pods are a good start, but obviously. They're not enough to deal with the current issue that we have. So I'll leave it to that and certainly want to hear from other members of council on their thoughts as well.
Thank you, Mayor Zahara.
Yeah, through to Counselor Positiony's question. I do know that Slate Lake has a similar issue as us. They've come to Edson to see what we're doing. And they have same, the same challenges of where do you put these individuals? And they have some of the, the challenges that we have. If you don't have a place for them, then they're breaking into people's sheds. Starting fires. You know, one of the reasons we, we did the Out of the Cold Initiative is our ER was getting people frostbite. They're sleeping inside of doors of seniors apartment buildings in town. You know, so there's, there's all these aspects that play into this. And unfortunately, unlike Medicine Hat, we're all over again, zero dollars from provincial government for. Homelessness issues. It's something that they're loving hard for. There's been. homelessness issues. It's something that they're lobbying hard for. Um, there's been resolutions at AUMA. Um, and we continue to, to work on that. But we don't have the resources the city does. I wish we didn't have this issue, wish we didn't have to deal with it, but the reality is it's here. Things are more acute. We're seeing an opioid crisis in, you know, Alberta and the country. And, uh, more people are running up in the streets. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm afraid that with the shelter pods, having five shelter pods and it gets cold outside at minus thirty or minus forty, people are gonna get desperate and are we gonna have issues with people fighting, trying to get in? Are they gonna start bunking up? We already have that issue with them bunking up in these eight by five rooms, which is a fire and a safety hazard. You know, so there's, these, all these consequences, I think, that we have to think about. I know that there's lots of concern about the safety and around the recycling depot and, and some of the challenges that we have around there. But, um, at least it's confined to an area. It's not in, you know, we've seen this happen in separate neighborhoods, getting complaints from residents because homeless are sleeping in the bushes and the trails and, and those sorts of things. So, uh, it's, it's a management issue. It's, uh, it's trying to do the right thing to ensure people don't freeze out on the streets or in a garbage bin or, or, or behind a building someplace. So, um, I think that the cost of this is miniscule when you talk about the resources that are used if we don't have this in place. With RCMP response times and, you know, all the, of, all the other consequences around this. But I am concerned, uh, I'll be quite honest with you, but having this at the recycling depot and having even a larger congregation of people in that area. But I don't know where else you would put it that would be conducive, um, to, to the public and where it would be useful.
Thank you. Um, councillor Taylor?
Uh, through the chair to administration or council, they have the answer. Uh, when is the Shelter Pod Committee scheduled to present back to us with latest stats or information? Is that coming in the next few months or is it a year?
Um, Ms. Byers?
Through the chair to councillor Taylor. Uh, typically, we, we get reports back, uh, when something has been granted in, you know, the following kind of January, February. Uh, so that, that is when we, you know, we could request that they come back and, and give us a report. They had gotten the money so late, I guess, the previous year, and they had just started the project. So there really wasn't much to report on at that time. So I would expect like in January, February coming up could be a, an opportune time.
Madam Chair, uh, just to clarify through councillor Taylor, the homeless task force meets on December second, I believe. So there might be some news or discussion post that meeting.
Thank you. I haven't had the time to speak, uh, just to reply to, um, councillor Taylor's question, um, regarding, uh, whether I'm in favor or not of the, another, you know, immediate, um, shelter, uh, right now for the homelessness. Um, I, I would be in favor of that. And as Mayor Zahara mentioned, um, I, I do have that concern about the lingering in that area. I, I don't know what can be done to avoid that during the daytime hours, uh, when people are out and about using that facility. But if there was, um, maybe, you know, if you're able to talk to the Shelter Pod Committee or the recycling depot about uh, what, you know, if they've got any ideas or suggestions, I think that would, uh, perhaps alleviate some of the concerns that I've been hearing from residents regarding the additional, um, people around there, homelessness around there. Any other questions? Okay, very none. Okay.
I don't know if administration has enough information to, for Tanya, do you have enough? I've only heard a few say whether or not they wanna afford with this or not.
Yeah, through the chair to Mayor Zahara, I guess, um, you know, providing this update, uh, to the homelessness task force in December would be good to say, you know, is council in favor? Or, you know, what they're willing to put forward. Are you suggesting that we find some budget to fund that trailer from, say, you know, November into March again, like we have in previous years, that costs six to seven thousand dollars? So, yeah, some, some direction there, I guess, would be good. And then if, you know, we're at the task force meeting, we, I guess, have a decision that we can move forward with and, and offer up to the, to the group.
Thank you. Um, CEO beverage?
Uh, thank you. Um, through the chair, what I might recommend is that administration does bring this forward through to the November twenty-fifth budget meeting, in which council then could make a motion and make a firm determination whether or not they want us to include it within the budget or not.
Councillor Shunard?
Through the chair, um, thank you for your comments, Christine, because that's exactly right. It's late in the year and if we don't know till March where it's gonna cost. Like A, before I'm gonna be in favor or opposed. I need to know what we're doing and how much it costs. I agree, they are residents of Edson, but it is the province's problem to help us fund this. And so far, we're lobbying, we've gotten nowhere. We've built the pods, they're not chomping up and saying, hey, it's a great idea. Thank you, Edson, for paying it. So we need the province to say it's a great idea. Here's some funds to help expand it and improve.
Thank you. So, Ms. Byers, you have everything in regard to move forward?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Moving on, we don't have any sundry. Do you have any questions from the public regarding items from this committee of the whole meeting? Steve?
Chair, we have Adrian with us. Go ahead, Adrian.
Good evening. Through the chair to councillor Shunard, I'm wondering if you could clarify that last remark. They are Edson residents, but the province's problem. Could you clarify what you meant there?
Councillor Shunard?
Okay, I'm clarifying, cause what we're hearing in the, the room, they're saying that these homeless people here are Edson residents. But what the fear is, is if we build something larger and greater, already now they don't want people congregating around the recycling depot. So we are caring for the people here. But if we build it too big, and at what cost? Because what they're saying is the mental health and homelessness is a provincial matter. So it's Edson's problem as a whole, but it's the province, Alberta Health and stuff to find the end solution. So we're trying to pay for a bandage for right now to save these people that are out in the cold.
Does that answer your question, Adrian?
Probably about as well as it's gonna be answered. Um, I do have two other questions, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, has there been any safety issues with the public? Any, uh, RCMP calls or safety issues at the shelter pods that we know of? Like, they're lingering, absolutely. But has there been any danger?
Okay, I'll refer this, uh, question to CEO beverage.
Uh, thank you. Um, at this time, I don't have, um, any data, uh, to provide you, Adrian, but I can most definitely follow up with you. With Staff Sergeant Dela.
Okay, thank you. And one last question, this would be through the chair to, I'm not sure whether it would be Pat or Brendan. I'm wondering how you chose the three facilities that are to be evaluated this year? With fifty-eight facilities to choose from, I'm wondering how you chose the landfill and, or why you chose the landfill and wastewater treatment plant?
Okay, Mr. Fisher?
Thanks. Through the, the chair to Adrian. Honestly, the wastewater treatment plant is, is, that the ventilation in the building and, and the opportunities for energy savings there are huge. It's a very complex system, um, just by virtue of the stuff that's in there. And I, I think that it's going to take a lot of effort for Brendan to actually create a useful energy model and execute some projects in there for energy savings. I would say that out of our portfolio, the wastewater treatment plant is one of the largest power consumers. And, and tackling it is, is a, a higher priority. And the other two, um, at the, at the airport, I think there's a lot of opportunity for trying some new things. Like I had mentioned, there's, there's a, a grant fund available for solar panels. And that looks like a feasible spot from my perspective. So I would like to, to look into some of those things with Brendan and, and kind of follow up on them. And, uh, just moving on our portfolio for the landfill.
Yeah, and for the landfill, the, since we've implemented the curbside organics program, we're, we've seen about a fifty, fifty-five, fifty-seven percent reduction in organic waste going to the landfill, which has seen about a seventeen to eighteen hundred ton per year reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from, from the landfill. So including that in the energy and emissions portfolio builds on that success that we've had over the last couple of years that further reduces our emissions from the landfill there, which is why we included it in this portfolio.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Adrian. And, uh, no more questions for anyone else? So we don't have any closed meeting sessions tonight, so we'll look, uh, go towards adjournment. I'll get a motion at the meeting, be adjourned. Mayor Zahara makes that motion, uh, non-debatable, all in favor?